And yes, it is that much fun to be able to do that, actually. So I just want you to know. I think I'm on, aren't I? Yeah, I'm on. Again, I want to welcome you all this evening. A little bit of excitement here tonight with all of the students for Art in City Hall, who are here, and we'll be recognizing those in just a moment. We have a delegation from Carlo County, Ireland, who are our sister-city relationship, and we're going to talk a little bit about them. As different parts, some of you may have the question. We have a regular city council meeting, and we invite all of you to stay as long as you'd like. But after the Art in City Hall, if you and your loved ones want to leave, we'll have a break in there if you want to do that. But please feel free to stay as long as you'd like. We have a variety of items in place tonight as we move forward. So I want to call this meeting of the city council for March 14th, 2018, to order. At this time at this meeting, we start with a moment of silence. Let's think about the, today as we think about, take that moment of silence, thinking about the young men and women who are here tonight and their families, the excitement that they have for being recognized, but also the hope for the future. These are our resources for the community, for the world. So we're so delighted that they're here, and at the same time, realizing that we've become a global community, and recognizing our friends from Carlo County, Ireland, as well. So with that, let's take that in mind as we all come together for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Alderman Condon, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. And again, just want to mention how great it all sounded with you joining in with us tonight. So that was, that's wonderful as we move forward with this as well. I just want to mention right now, Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose, Condon, Ross, Witten, here, Mattson, here.
Here.
Yes?
Here.
Yeah.
They're all excited to see you. Everybody's here, so that's great. And again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I again would like to welcome all those in attendance, and those who are viewing this meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you are also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones or other electronic handheld devices, as they can interfere with the audio system and be somewhat disruptive here in the chambers. You will have an opportunity to address the, and the opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body, and not to any single member. We would ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. And I know you all will. And I got to meet a lot of you upstairs, and so many others that are here tonight. So thank you again for being here. At that point, I want to, will an Alderman move approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for February 28th? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. So just so you get a sense of that, everybody, for a lot of the kids that are here as well, tonight is a city council meeting. Every other week, we have a meeting. Last week was a committee of the whole, where all the items you may see on an agenda were discussed individually and in detail. Tonight, if those have been discussed, we move all of those along. There's a few items that we'll be discussing tonight, and someone leaned against the light switch, but that's okay in the back. So I think it's important as we think about that, is how this all comes together. So next we turn over, is there a city administrator update this evening? There is nothing this evening from our city administrator. Will an Alderman move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for March 7th? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. We have no appointments, and again, our proclamations, we actually have one we'll be recognizing a little bit later. Appointments, meaning we appoint people to various commissions and committees, there are none of those being appointed this evening. Our first, we want to recognize our sister-city Carlo County, Ireland, and their delegation. Alderman Rossen is going to read our proclamation this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Shirley.
We don't have mics.
Oh, great. No mic, all right. Let's do this. So thank you, I'm honored to read this. I had the opportunity last year with Rachel, and I just phone up here right now, to go to, oh, Ireland, and I have a question, which might be, I think, a little bit, so, for that said, proclamation, whereas, we facilitate the creation of...
Contain world peace. Ah, cities, their elected officials and their citizens collaborate internationally through organizations such as Sister Cities International. And whereas Sister Cities International was founded as a presidential initiative by President Dwight D. Eisenhower on September 11th, 1956, to create more community-led global relationships so people of different cultures could appreciate their differences and build partnerships. And Sister, and whereas Sister Cities International currently has 550 U.S. member cities, counties, and states with relationships spanning six continents, in 145 countries, and over 2,100 communities with representation from nearly every district in the House of Representatives. And whereas Carlo County, Ireland, and the city of Davenport, Iowa, became sister cities on September 26th, 2006, under a signed proclamation, making Carlo County the third sister city for Davenport, Iowa. And whereas these relationships include educational, economic, cultural, municipal, and humanitarian assistance exchange programs that are mutually beneficial to each community. And whereas Carlo County delegates are visiting Davenport, Iowa, for, from March 14th to March 21st, to expand on international best practices, and to promote talent exchange with Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and emergency response resources, to collaborate with Davenport Parks and Recreation on education programming and cultural activities, and to explore the riverfront, downtown, and neighborhood development practices and incentives. Now therefore, we, Mayor Frank Klipsch and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of March 14th through the 21st as Carlo County, Ireland Week in the city of Davenport, and celebrate the continued sister cities relationship and commitment to supporting a more peaceful and prosperous future through people-to-people exchanges dated this 14th day of March, 2018, and I move this proclamation.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Why don't we have the delegation come on and meet me at the podium? Yeah, I know. Michael, how are you?
Very, very good.
Maybe you could introduce yourselves, and then give us a little bit of remarks, and then we'll, we have a few gifts we want to present to you this evening.
We also have the gift too. We like to come, we don't like to come with our hands hanging. Look, it's a real honor for us here to be here representing.
And I would ask, if you wouldn't mind, speaking to this, even though it's, we've got the cameras facing you, you can be heard a little better.
Oh, see, okay. Well, it's a real honor really for us to be here on behalf of County Carlo, representing Ireland, I suppose, here during St. Patrick's Week. Would really like to thank you for your warm welcome both this morning, and indeed for your very nice welcome at the airport, when our planes sort of went wrong because of the weather. So it's really, your hospitality is very welcome to us. Just like to introduce our team. I'll start with Dan McInerney. Dan is our Director of Services for Infrastructure, and he's a particular interest in emergency services. And we had a very fruitful visit this morning in the firehouse, and we got a lot of new ideas there, and really sort of sums up our mission here, at least, to try and find best practice internationally, and through our twin-city relationship is very good, that we can see what others are doing. So second, then we have Eileen Brophy. Eileen is here representing the Rotary Club, which is, as you know, is a charitable organization, which is very, very, you know, beneficial for charities and things in Ireland, and indeed internationally. So Eileen will be linking with them during her visit. Also then we have, who else over here? Michael Kelly. And Michael's role is a governor in St. Patrick's College in Carlo, where we have strong links with St. Ambrose University here in Davenport. And Michael's mission really is to make sure that our ties and links are strong, and student exchange program continues. So we're very, are very happy that that's, because you've actually caught us a little unaware, the County Carlo Week that you've mentioned there in your postcard is actually a great honor for us, to have a city here in America that has a County Carlo Week. So we're very, very happy about that. Thank you very much for that honor, your honor. So that's really, I want to say, you have a very, very busy meeting, but during this week of St. Patrick, as well as St. Patrick's Festival, we're just, it's great that we're doing our little bit to continue our relations between Ireland and this great country, the USA, and indeed between County Carlo and Davenport. So thank you very much, your honor.
Thank you. Give him a nice round of applause.
Thank you very much.
And then here's one for you as the elected official. In addition to those, as we, I wanted to present, we have, I think you received one at lunch today, but a challenge coin from Brigadier General Dwayne Gamble was there from the arsenal over lunchtime. So we have one from the city as well. So we not only challenge you to continue this great representative relationship, but also to look towards future developments in the future. So with that, I will present you one there. Here's a case for that one if you want.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Rare. I'm going to pass out my coins for you.
Thank you very much. We've also just brought a small token of our visit here. It's a picture of a sculptor, really, of Up Park Arch, which was a big house, which is now used for agricultural research in Carlo County, and it was done by a local artist on, that's why I'm going to have to...
Well, thank you very much. We look over here first, we can look at the, and we'll look over here next. Okay, now all of you have cameras, if you want to picture, I'll just... Thank you very much. And I think instead of heading back up to the desk, I'll just do this from here. I'm going to have, Steve, come on up here, where are you? We're going to recognize our Art in City Hall award winners, and maybe you want to make some general comments a little bit first, and then we'll recognize the students.
Okay. So my name is Steve Schwegler, and I'm proud to serve the Davenport Community School District as the Fine Arts Curriculum Specialist. And we're excited to be here tonight to share our art in city hall. And we have 27 students here, and our theme for this year is building community through art. And I think it's just so appropriate that that is their theme, and we are here in city hall, and when even, even when you come in city hall, you are greeted by, you know, art, and it directs you to the third floor where our artwork is, and will be for the next year. So thank you, Mayor Klipsch and city council, for having us here. And I'll announce the student name, and as soon as I announce the student name, if the students would, would come on up and receive their certificate from you, and why they're coming on up, I'll give a little blurb about what grade they're in, and what school they're from, and who their art teacher is, and maybe a little bit about what their process was in creating their art or inspiration towards their work of art.
Steve, as you come up, we'll do, as you're doing the information, I'll hand it to them, that anybody wants to take a picture, you can take a quick picture.
Sure.
And then we'll go on from there, that'll keep it...
Keep it moving. And where do they go then after that, mayor? Do they...
Yeah, they can go right up in front here. We'll just line up in front and get one picture with the whole group.
Okay, sounds great. All right, and so we'll start off with our, with, you have Catherine there? Yeah. And start off with some high school students, to kind of lead the way here. Catherine Shocker, 9th grade, Central High School. Her art teacher is Juan Rangel, and she wanted to take pictures of the playground with water droplets on the things in the park. Seeing the bridge and the bench made me excited, she says. So that's Catherine.
There we go. Caitlin Downey, 11th grade, North High School. Michelle O'Brien is her teacher, and she chose to take this photo from this perspective because it's from a low view of the train tracks, but with the sky bridge in the back.
It gives a pop of color. Melissa Rump, 11th grade, West High School. Chad Wolf is the teacher. I was absolutely drawn to the sunset and wanted to capture it in the best way I could. I noticed the tiny waves coming up, and I knew I wanted that in the image. I went to the bottom of the boat ramp and put my lens eye level to the water. Patience was definitely important. Grace Lewis, 10th grade, Mid-City High School. Latoya Lewis is the art teacher. I took this photograph right before it started snowing, so it was very cold. I love taking photos in the winter. I think that the cold winter lighting from the sun is perfect to capture an amazing photograph. Lily Hessling, 7th grader from the Creative Arts Academy. Colleen Tomlinson is the art teacher. My photograph beautifully shows that even people can do incredible things. Alexis Selby, 7th grade, Smart Intermediate. Brian White is her art teacher. I chose the bridge because it helps people get to places. Laurel Metcalf, 8th grade, Sudlow Intermediate. Annette Acout Lopez is her teacher. I have nostalgic and happy memories of watching the Centennial Bridge with my family from my dad's boat. I felt like the bridge represented well what I think when I think of Davenport. Okay.
Great.
Evan Fornell, 8th grader from Williams Intermediate. Art teacher, Rita Rickles-Glaw. The artwork is called "A Building in Davenport." Sophia Magel Yens, Yines, Magel Yines, 8th grader from Wood Intermediate. Growing up, my parents took my sisters and I to the library very often, so now I have a close connection to all libraries. It's of the main public library downtown, and the architect that did that is the same architect that built the building at the Kennedy Center in Washington, DC. So it looks very much familiar to that, if you've ever been there. Ava Gott, 4th grade, Adams Elementary. Tony Ryder is the art teacher. I chose this landmark because it looked like a really good picture, and it looked like a really challenging one to draw and paint. I like challenges. Austin Hodges, 4th grade, Bluegrass Elementary. Nicole Gillette is the art teacher. I picked Modern Woodman Park because the park stands out. I wanted my art to stand out. Haven Teagle, 4th grade, Buchanan Elementary. Lisa Weiderman, art teacher. I drew Dylan Fountain because I love the details on it and the buildings around it. The fountain is tall and stands out. Callie Davis, 4th grade, Buffalo Elementary. Jamie Bond is the art teacher. The Centennial Bridge is something that I've been around my whole life. I know where I am if I'm by the Centennial Bridge. I'm always on it because my family lives in Davenport by the bridge. It makes me comfortable and at home. Alicia Turner, 4th grade, Eisenhower Elementary. Susan Sweeney, art teacher. The Centennial Bridge gets a lot of, you know, focus, I think, but I'm inspired by the beauty of the Centennial Bridge. Kari Legrone, 5th grade, Fillmore Elementary. Derek Lum is the art teacher. I chose to paint the Figgy because it is a happy place for people to come together. This is our teacher, Derek.
Just for the fun of it, come on, let's get a picture.
Mason Bogan, 5th grader from Garfield Elementary. Sherry Smith is the art teacher. I made this artwork because it takes place in Chicago when the sun is setting. Reese Reverts, 5th grader from Harrison Elementary. Laura Carter is the art teacher. My inspiration was having fun going to Modern Woodman to watch baseball and play games. One of my favorite sports is baseball. Natalie Peppers, 4th grade, Hayes Elementary. Connie Bieber is the art teacher. I like to go to Vandavere Park. Maya Gibson, 3rd grade, Jackson Elementary. Stacy Hauck, art educator. My painting of a still life of a plant took a long time to make. I like mixing colors to make new ones. Teen Tron, 5th grade, Jefferson Elementary. Leanna Carter, art educator. My artwork is about the place in Davenport, Iowa. There is a bridge and a Ferris wheel. Tatiana Devers, 3rd grade, Madison Elementary. Brian Nichol, art teacher. When you make art, it should make you feel good. When I finished this piece of artwork, it made me feel good, and I hope those who see it will feel good and be happy. Kate Staley, 4th grade, McKinley Elementary. Michelle Lundquist, Lundquist is the art teacher. I painted this because I bike with my family, and my grandma loves the river. Bianca Russell, 4th grade, Monroe Elementary. David Hauck, art educator. I chose the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds, and it's my favorite place to go in the summer. Bella Jenter, 4th grade, Truman Elementary. Jessica Bonilla is the art teacher. The title of my artwork is "The Great View."
Did you have Bella? No. And I'm going to give you this one, so we'll get a picture, and we'll get it back when we get to the rally. Thank you. Good teamwork, thank you. I knew we had one.
My artwork makes me feel proud, calm, happy. I'm an artist because I love art and drawing and looking and creating art. Zoe Drake. There we go. We're back on track. 3rd grade, Walcott Elementary. Anna Blackburn is the art teacher. I ride the bike path in the summer. It reminds me of the bike trail because it has a lot of curves. I made the path with my favorite colors. Carolyn Stauffer, 4th grade, Washington Elementary. Anne Randfelt, art teacher. During the summer, I would ride the city bus to summer camp. I would always see this area downtown as we passed by.
And over there, that guy over there. Till even had your principal came and get a picture of you.
That's great. Before we present our last certificate here, I just want to thank all the students and parents and teachers and principals for coming today in support of these award winners. So thank you all for coming. Our next student is Ariana Dolph, 5th grader from Wilson Elementary. Adam Little is the art teacher. And this kind of sums up, I think, the whole feeling of creating art through community. The river is like the heart and blood of Davenport. When I think of Davenport, I instantly think of the Mississippi River.
Why don't we have all of you just kind of snuggle in, and why don't we have the council stand up behind them, and we'll get that. Yeah, the little guys. Kids, help to get the little ones. Kids, thank you very much. You'll all know, that's what the paparazzi looks like from out in front when you're standing there, guys, so. If you all, if you would like to leave now, you can, you can please stay as long as you'd like. You just got knocked. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, moms and dads, grandmas and grandpas.
Again, as people are just, the last few people are leaving, we want to thank again all the city staff for their help putting this all together with us and getting them all done. Again Tiffany and Nevada and other city staff. But also I want to thank Dr. Tate who was here this evening, many of the school district personnel who were here. Rachel Mullin is here doing multiple, actually Steiner now, sorry. Multiple duties with the Sister City Program and the district working with the programs and development activities of the city and marketing. So we thank all of you for being here. It was really great having all the kids here and all of you also in attendance this evening. And thank you too again, all my new friends from Carlo County. And we're just chatting it up until they start on with the rest of the meeting. Okay, I think we're going to go on. We now want to bring up a presentation or recognition, a presentation actually, for our City of Davenport AmeriCorps program. I think Teresa Hallman is going to be coming up doing a little program and it's our Youth Corps Celebration and she'll give you a little background of what that means. So Teresa, if you want to come on up.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, that was a lot more people here than we knew were going to be here. I am Teresa Hallman. I am the Senior Recreation Manager and always happy to be here. I am also the City of Davenport AmeriCorps Program Director, which AmeriCorps is basically a service grant that we receive to do impact in a community issue. Our issue that we have our grant working on is to raise our graduation rate. So to help youth and families in our area succeed. We have the largest AmeriCorps program in the state of Iowa. It's very multifaceted and it's probably one of the things I love most about my job because it does help so many youth and families. And it's great that we have a city that supports that and a school district that supports it and a lot of great community partners. This is March 11th, March 17th is National AmeriCorps Week where over 60,000 members nationwide are just supposed to be celebrated and appreciated for all the community service that they do. We currently have 46 members serving at a variety of sites. They serve at parks, junior theater, our camps, our youth sports. We also have members at Big Brothers, Big Sisters, helping make matches and doing match activities. We also have members at the School District Stepping Stones Program and also most recently Attendance Works. We added this year the Davenport Community Library Girl Scouts. And so we have members serving at all these different agencies. I'm going to tell you just really quickly, one of the things that I think is really, really exciting is we did grow our grant like by 20 members this last year. And one of the things that way we did that was to help support the Davenport Community Schools with their Attendance Works Program, which is really a direct thing for raising our graduation rate. It's starting off kids knowing that it's important to go there, to get to school and to be attending. And it's amazing how many chronically absent kids we have at a young age in elementary schools. It's very disconcerting actually when you see the numbers. But we placed members at over 12 of the schools. Our goal is to get them at every school. And they worked with 100 kids each quarter. And the goal is to get them off of the chronically absent list with such 25% absenteeism in that quarter. That's a lot of days off. That's like missing nine days a quarter. And we moved 60 total. So 60 kids off of, after working with 200 kids, that's 60 of them that are now attending. And the members do stuff like go to lunch with them, say thank you for coming, making sure they call them and say you're going to go to school this week. Just some stuff simple like that has made such a huge difference. So we're really, really excited about that program and many others. But I think the best people to speak about serving are the members and the site supervisors themselves. So I'm going to introduce Amani who is a veteran member actually. She's serving her third term, which it is not easy to serve because they don't really get anything for doing it. They get an educational award and like a living stipend, but it really is that they're getting hopefully good experiences and a lot of, like I said, experiencing what they want to do. So I'll let Amani speak.
Hey, like Teresa said, my name is Amani Kirby and I've served as an AmeriCorps member for three years. I served at Madison Elementary School through their Stepping Stones Program. And we basically focus on, as Teresa pointed out, lowering that, the dropout rate for high school and increasing school attendance. So one of the things that we focus on for Stepping Stones is making it fun to be, fun to be in the program. So offering some enrichment programs and I have designed like STEM activities and literacy projects to make it fun for kids to come to the program. So, as well as things like over the summer. So those are just like examples of some of the programs we put together to make it fun as well as have a safe place for kids to go to after school. So that's what I focused on.
Thank you. This is a great program. I've got to speak to the, all the students at beginning of the year and at the end of the session. It's a great, exciting group of young people who are focused on making our communities better. So we want to thank you all for being here. Thank you for all the work that you do and I know you'll keep up doing much more great work in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One more thing, this is the week that we are taking Youth Corps applications, which is another whole large component of our program. We have 40 of them serving over the summer, but applications are due Friday, so plug, plug, plug. Get the word out. But we do have a lot, but we obviously want a lot more because these kids really do a lot over the summer. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'd now like to ask Joe Taylor. And again, before we begin, I just want to note as you're going to give us a RagBri update. We want to, again, thank you for all your years of service. We saw the announcement about your retirement. I know you've got too much energy not to keep doing great things somewhere, so we want to thank you for all of that. And I know you're going to give us a little RagBri update because that's obviously a big event coming.
Absolutely, thank you. I'll be brief also as well. I have a lot of papers here, but I use really, really big type, so it's not as bad as it looks. First of all, special welcome to our guests and RagBri, to which I'll refer, is the Register's Annual Great Bicycle Ride Across Iowa. Some 15,000 bicyclists begin with their back tire, their bicycle in the Missouri River, ride some 500 miles across Iowa, and this year they'll dip their front tire in the Mississippi River here in Davenport. So that's what RagBri is. Thank you to the City of Davenport for its support last summer when the proposal to host RagBri was discussed and ultimately submitted. Reminder, RagBri is the biggest, longest, and oldest bicycle ride in the world. And coupled with the Quad City Times Big Seven Run, Davenport will again play host to the single largest sports participation day in Iowa on Saturday, July 28th. Our team effort paid off as Davenport was selected to be the endpoint for RagBri 46. This will be the fifth time RagBri has visited Davenport. The inaugural ride in 1973, 1982, 2011, 2015, and now 2018, third time in seven years. Although the focus is on the ending on Saturday, July 28th, there are other positive impacts from RagBri. First, the Route Inspection Ride will occur the week of June 3rd with that ride ending in Davenport on Saturday, June 9th. And second, many hundreds of RagBriers will arrive ahead of time, particularly July 20th and 21st, to park their cars and then catch their motor coaches for the ride west to begin their ride back east on Sunday, July 22nd. As I say, the ending of RagBri in Davenport coupled with the Big Seven makes for a major news event here that garners local, regional, and often national news coverage. Our committees have been meeting for more than a month now to set plans in motion. Alderman Condon has been providing assistance and input. And our formal executive committee consists of Chief Sikorsky, Sarah Ott, and Nicole Gleason from the City of Davenport, Molly Otting Carlson, Mindy Chapman, and myself from the Quad Cities Convention Visitors Bureau. The exact route, theme, and logo will be announced in the next couple of weeks, so watch for that. One last point, Deputy City Clerk Jackie Holacheck and the Quad Cities Convention Visitors Bureau are hosting the annual Davenport Festival and Special Events Workshop tomorrow, 3:30 PM at River Center South. The workshop is open to any individual or organization planning an event in the city in 2008 and we intend to use that time to help bolster and enhance activities in the City of Davenport. So with that, thank you very much. We look forward to RagBri this summer.
Thank you very much. That's great news. Our next item, we're going to, any petitions, communications from council members or myself? And I'm going to open up with Alderman Dickman first.
No community engagement update this evening?
Thank you very much. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to, again, welcome our friends from Ireland, but one person I want to recognize sitting in the second row, Mr. O'Leary. He's my traveling partner to China as we leave shortly in a few days. So another Sister Cities engagement there for the next week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, it's good to see you too, Patrick. Kyle, Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a very appropriate announcement for an opportunity for public input for Art on the Riverfront, a meeting held at the Figgy Museum next Tuesday, March 20th from 5:30 to 7:30. This is being put on by the City of Davenport, the Downtown Partnership, and the Figgy Museum. What we're looking at is an integrated art plan for our riverfront. So bring your ideas to share. There will be artists, landscape architects, and architects there to hear your ideas and try to put a plan together. We're not necessarily looking for that static sculpture garden, but maybe a more dynamic art that goes throughout our riverfront and downtown. Alderwoman McGinnis and myself and City Administrator Spiegel will be on the steering committee for that and we will be there ready to hear the public's input and put together a great art concept. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Next is Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, watching all the kids and having the opportunity over the years to see all the beautiful artwork up in the hallway when I go to work at City Hall, it makes me happy and proud of what our kids can do. I see our friends from Ireland here, having an opportunity to talk to our great Team Davenport and see our community output. You know, that's why Davenport is America's greatest city and welcome.
Thank you very much, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank city staff in Public Works. I know Robin Dunn and other staff worked with Davenport North High School and the Dual Enrollment Program on a water preservation presentation that was presented this past weekend over at the River Center. So they had some great presentations and I think the kids had a great time and learned a lot and I greatly appreciate staff working with the schools on that project. So, thank you.
Great. Alderman Condon.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a personal proclamation, if it's appropriate, that in my short time on council, this has been my favorite meeting. First of all, because we're inviting or welcoming our sister city here and I've been telling folks for years that St. Patrick's Day is the unofficial start of spring in the Quad Cities and the happiest day of the year. So if you've never been down to the parade, there's something for everybody down there. And then art in City Hall is great. That was really exciting. It's fun to live in a community that supports the arts and celebrates the arts. I actually ran into one of my old art teachers upstairs and we got to laugh a little bit about how I chose to express my creativity when I was a student, but we also talked about how I continued to use that creativity as an adult and it's been a real strength of mine. So I encourage those kids to continue to flex that muscle, no matter what they go into in life, and it'll be exciting to see where those future leaders end up taking us.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to remind everybody that there is a meeting tomorrow night at the Roosevelt Community Center on Minnie Avenue. And this is to talk about the West Side Plan, the Court of the Plan for the Rockingham Road Corridor, you know, as part of urban revitalization, which we've been talking about. One of the things we're also looking at is revitalization of our old heritage urban commercial corridors. And this is a chance for people to be there and share their comments. It will be a staff-led discussion and I'm looking forward to being there and others and I hope that you can join us tomorrow night. And that starts at 6 o'clock at the Roosevelt Community Center tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Clul.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. One, our high schools today in Davenport participated in a walkout expressing their concerns about safety in the schools. I'm real pleased that all of those events went well today. I attended the one at Central. The kids were well spoken. They were on time. And as much as I appreciate the students and what they stood for, I wanted to stand in solidarity with them, I also wanted to express my appreciation for Davenport Schools for giving the kids an opportunity to express their First Amendment rights. It was just a good example, win-win on all sides. The second thing is I just wanted to say with the art in City Hall, I was hoping the kids would be here to hear this, but I was thinking, you know, art is often considered to be a window to the soul, but I was thinking as well, just as much, it's a reflection for the rest of us that look at that art. It's a reflection of that stuff that comes from the soul. And it's really quite beautiful. And I'm thinking that the better you get at art, probably the more accurate you are in depicting the beauty that is in all of us after all. So I just wanted to maybe carry that back, if you would, to the kids. I really appreciate what they've done. Art is life and it's here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Again, I want to just mention a couple of quick items myself is our delegation will be in the parade on Saturday. I think I'm joining them on a float, so that should be a lot of fun. It's a fun group. I've got to head lunch with them today, so I'm looking forward to spending more time with you. And also, I just wanted to thank Alderman Mattson as Mayor Pro Tem stepping in last week, as well as the council did a great job, of course. And just a little bit about the trip to DC. Again, it was looking at with the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative, which covers the cost of my attendance at that event, but more importantly, looking at not only infrastructure and finding funding that we potentially can partner with to bring back to our Quad Cities. Obviously Clean Water Initiative, the Farm Bill, there's a lot of things that impact our area and we worked very hard talking to our legislators as well as the elected officials, that other elected officials that were there. So we'll keep you informed of the process as that goes on. So seeing no others, we're going to move on to individual approval items on the discussion agenda. Our first item is for a second consideration of ordinance for Case REZ 17-08, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to rezone 37.63 acres, more or less, of property generally located between Harrison Street and Pershing Avenue and between 12th Street and 5th Street from R4 Moderate Density Dwelling District. Next, R6M High Density Dwelling District, C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, C2 General Commercial District, C4 Central Business District, and M1 Light Industrial District to a PID, which is a Planned Institutional District. Are there any public with comments? Please come on up, identify yourself, name and your address, please.
My name is Rich Gravert. I have Gravert's Auto Service on 703 Harrison Street. My understanding, I'm not involved with the zoning anymore. They've taken me out, but the property right behind me, they're talking about possibly blocking the alley off. While my business has a lot of larger trucks, motor homes, U-Haul trucks that are 26-foot long, and they would block that alley without giving me an access to get out, we don't need trucks and motor homes to be backing down that alley behind Hallegeth McCabe and whatever's going to be there in the future for Palmer. So if that had to be the case, I'd like to then consider at least an access behind my shop to Harrison Street. If it came down to that, that they're going to take the alley out, I'd love to have an access, not just a small, I'm talking something that get these bigger trucks and motor home and tow trucks out of there instead of have to back down that alley. And I know it's going to help Hallegeth McCabe also because they have vendors come up there for the flowers and their casket trucks. I know it's going to be a burden for them also. So if, in the planning, I want you guys to know that that is a pretty major concern for me to keep my business going and to do the kind of work that we have been doing for the last 13, 14 years there, so.
Thank you. And you might want to talk to Bruce Berger, who's our community planner and economic development editor. Make sure you mention that to him as well.
I will.
And he's back there and he can meet you after the meeting if you have time.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public want to speak?
My name is John Dutey and I'm passing out some numbers for you. I know you guys like data and so I thought I'd do an... My, I won't go into that personal story, Mike. So the data is, what I'm circulating is, is just a brief summary of some of the findings in the consolidated plan that the city is required to file with HUD as, and recipient of CDBG monies. And a lot of that data is talking about the shortage of affordable housing for families and persons with incomes of 30% AMI and below. And we talk a lot about the affordable housing that we do have in the city, but the city's own report says there's a dramatic shortage of housing for a very specific group of folks that make 30% of the AMI and below. Quad Cities, our AMI is $64,000, and so we're talking about people that are making $20,000 and less. 75 of the units that we're talking about that might be demolished are exactly within that 30% AMI affordability at $400 to $650. So when you're talking about 75 folks that will have to go somewhere else where there's already a shortage, that's going to be a lot more people coming into the system where I work, and that is with Humility Mary Housing and Shelter. I'm really, really excited and pleased, and it's awesome that the Mosaic report was posted online as included in the documents. But there are two other reports that talk about disparate impact on communities of low income and communities of African Americans and Latinos that also talk about disparate impact that don't agree with the findings of Mosaic. I know all of you read those reports, but we, as the public, haven't heard you talk about what your feelings are about those reports. So it'd be good to hear you talk about a very uncomfortable topic, and that is, how is race and economics a part of our social fabric here in Davenport? Many of you, all of you are aware of the disparate impact that our, the flow of the population is going on north and east, and that's causing the closure of JB, and we've just heard last week that it might cause the closure of SMART. So we have this disparate impact on people of school age, of families who are having to relocate, and we have disparate impact on people making very, very little money. We have a solution in front of us, and two of those solutions are on the back page of the Mosaic report, page 24. The Mosaic is actually asking the city to bring these parties together and talk about the disparate impact. Bring Mosaic together with Mr. Bradford and Mr. Khan so that you can hear their expert views and to see if there actually is, and what is the disparate impact. If we don't address the disparate impact now in the potential violation of the Fair Housing Act, what does that do to our future HUD and CDBG monies that are already decreasing? The second point that they raise is explore partnerships that might be able to resolve some of the housing crisis that we're experiencing. I've talked before about, this is not just about Palmer. This is about Genesis, and it's about St. Ambrose, who all have PIDs. I've been able to get a map of all the parcels that are now considered part of the Palmer PID, the Genesis PID, they're getting closer, and the Ambrose PID. Altogether, those three entities have accumulated 119 acres, 208 parcels, and combined $21 million worth of assessed value of, just in those few pockets in the center city of Davenport. $21 million of assessed value, and much of that property is now not taxable. What are we, how do, there's opportunities to work with those three organizations, the great generosity of so many people in Davenport, and the city council to create solutions to our affordable housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to address us?
My name's Elijah Grant, 3612 Fair Avenue. I'm actually here with Taylor and C Justice, which is basically a group that we're starting to help kind of create solutions for situations that are coming up in our community and also create a voice for those people who aren't aware of what's going on. So I just wanted to take, thank John for kind of educating everyone in attendance of what's going on. My perspective is on the real estate side, so what I look forward to is meeting with Bruce Berger afterwards and chatting about how we can leverage these vacant lots that we have and some of these abandoned homes to repurpose them, such as they're doing in Cedar Rapids with a partner of ours named Daniel Tardy through Stan Grill, which takes these houses and makes them community spaces. So there may be an attic that's a mother-in-law apartment that's renting at $400 a month, and then we'll take the basement and make that a community garden that the people come into and plant their things or borrow lawn equipment, and really start to cultivate micro communities in central Davenport, because I think, I think we're all aware that it's important for our city to grow and look for opportunities to expand and revitalize, and that's ultimately the goal of every city. And I think we also should focus on creative solutions within affordable housing and use that as opportunities to create a new culture of community, so that way we're not just repeating the same cycle over and over. So I just want to thank everyone, because I know you guys are aware of all this, and I just want to let you know that I'm also a part of this, and I want to be a part of the creative solutions, as Alderman Condon mentioned, and just come as a resource to come up with ideas and bring people together strategically.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Hi. My name is Will Patton, and I live at 626 North Perry Street, apartment number seven in Davenport's Third Ward, and I'm here today as a residence of the neighborhood, I'm sorry, resident of the neighborhood around the PID, as well as an organizer for the Quad Cities DSA at quadcitiesDSA.com. I'd like to say again that the data of the Mosaic report is flawed in that it does not separate the student population from the non-student resident population, and that this mistake accidentally skews the data a bit in terms of the ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds of a lot of residents. The Bradford Report actually uses the same 2010 census data to explain this and also illustrate that when you compare the, sorry, if, when you compare the cumulative population of non-white residents to the number of white residents, the Bradford Report and the Mosaic Reports give almost the same trend with about 50/50, but again, that data is skewed by the failure of the Mosaic Report to separate the non-student population from the student population, and this is in regards to the concentration of these groups in that area. Again, this data is from 2010, so it's a little bit outdated, and we can't actually measure any displacement that might have already occurred, except maybe the 45 or so vacant units in the PID that Palmer doesn't own yet that are set to be demolished. The Mosaic Report does make certain recommendations, and we're glad to see that Palmer, at least the last time we were here, showed some interest in looking into those more with the community and surrounding area. The Mosaic Report also says that they should be working with local nonprofits, and again, the residents. We, as the QCDSA, have met with some of these nonprofits, as well as the real estate development entrepreneurs, I guess. The Quad Cities chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America has already done canvassing and has shown that there is widespread public interest in making amendments to Palmer's plan of land usage, and we would like to let you know that we are fully willing to accommodate and facilitate any further forums or training, education on this matter with the community, and hopefully get some involvement with local nonprofits, as well as maybe members of council. In conclusion, I'd just like to say that historically, the area around the PID has a strong working-class history, and that we should preserve the integrity of that and move forward in a more innovative fashion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public want to speak?
Hi. I'm Olivia Williams. My address is 631 East 15th Street in Davenport. I'm a professor at Augustana, and I wanted to echo what a couple of speakers have said, that there have been two critical reports in addition to the Mosaic Reports that haven't been posted online for these agenda, for the agenda, and we'd like to hear your thoughts on how you process that information, that there are these different perspectives on the disparate impact. And secondly, more of the Mosaic recommendations. I'd like to hear you talk more about how Mosaic might partner with people or provide some affordable housing, or some of those recommendations that are in there. And then I wanted to share some of my research. So my research has been on community land trusts, and community land trusts are a great kind of remedy to some of the issues we're seeing here. So south of Locust, there's a lot of blight, but there's also an affordable housing need overall, and we're seeing displacement happen if 75 houses get torn down here. So there's a great need for affordable housing, so that's a concern. So a community land trust is a program, it can either be a nonprofit or it can be run by a city, but basically the CLT owns the land and then separates the land from the house or a building, apartment building, and usually has residents on the board and other low-income people in a neighborhood on the board, as well as professionals. So there's more community control over what happens in a neighborhood and input into what can be done in that neighborhood. And so CLT might buy some land or be given some land, and then that land, people can buy a house, if it's for homeownership, people can buy a house, and the house will be cheaper than it would be if you're normally buying a house, because the land stays owned by the CLT in perpetuity. And so that land stays affordable over the long term. So it can help stabilize a neighborhood, improve the look of a neighborhood by putting houses there, but also as a neighborhood changes and land values rise, which I would expect to happen in this area around the Palmer PID, the, those, that land will stay affordable, will stay in the land trust. So it actually preserves affordability in this long-term way that most affordable housing options don't, and preserves the subsidy too, wherever that subsidy comes from. Which brings me back to the PID, where this is kind of a moment where even the Mosaic Report says we need to be thinking about some of these effects and partnering with Palmer on solving some of the impact that will come out of this. So this is a moment where we're setting a precedent for when other institutions expand or Palmer expands and they, you know, ask for more land and things. Are we asking for money for affordable housing for them, from them, or other resources from what they're taking away from the residents of Davenport? Those are the kind of things I'm really concerned about at this moment, where we don't really have time in these hearings to figure it all out, but it keeps getting approved when we're bringing up these issues, and the public seems to be really concerned about this. So I'd also say with the CLT, I forgot to mention, that it allows people to build equity who haven't owned a home before, haven't had access to homeownership before. They can still build equity in that house and resell it in the land trust at an affordable rate. They're not getting the full equity, but usually 25% of the increase in value goes to a homeowner. So it can help build up a population as well. And they can also be used for rental housing, for commercial businesses, for urban gardens, kind of whatever people want it to be for. It could be run by a city, and, you know, it could be paid for by payments in lieu of taxes if we want to put that kind of policy in the PID agreement. I just think now's the time to be thinking about these really creative solutions, and we can, we can slow down this process in order to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would suggest, before you go, you may want to speak to Bruce Berger. I hate to keep sending everybody over to see Bruce, but some of those ideas sound interesting, so you may want to share those with him, because they help package the different programs like that together. So if you would, maybe have a chance to talk to him. Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Hello. My name is Scott Tonnercliff. My office is at 122 East 15th Street. I'm the director of the Hilltop Campus Village, a Main Street Iowa program dedicated to economic revitalization, historic preservation, and restoration. I applaud the comments that have been made by some of the people here today, want to let them know that we, as a not-for-profit organization serving this area, would welcome the opportunity to be able to sit with city council as they strategize for any creative solutions that come forward. I've read the Mosaic study as well. I've also read some of the concepts from members of city council regarding urban revitalization, and I would say that there's a lot of creative thinking going on, but one thing I think on which most of us can agree is that this is not a problem centered on Palmer College. If we are, as a city, to build on quality and take on what is a considerable challenge with urban revitalization, we must start looking at a much, much broader area than the 37.63 acres proposed for a PID. I would also like to mention that, just in passing, that groups like St. Ambrose, like Genesis, and like Palmer represent educational institutions that have for many years been at the heart of the quality that we enjoy Davenport in, and they need to be somewhere, and I think it's appropriate to view it as a positive, that things like advanced education and advanced health care are in the central part of our city. They should be part of the process and the solution as well. So we want to be involved as a 501(c) not-for-profit. I like the idea of exploring community land trusts, but it's a much broader geographic challenge. So if we're going to look at it, let's look at it in a comprehensive manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
David Kenny. I'm Maria Dickman's ward. I hate coming up here, but I've been following the meetings on TV, which I appreciate the council keeping them on so that if you can't come down here, you can still keep informed with local developments. And I kind of wanted to talk about the Palmer issue, because I'm a little concerned about the size of the project and the number of homes that are going to have to be destroyed, and what are these residents going to do for housing? That's kind of my big issue. And I got a couple of other ideas, too. They want a football field there. Right now, they play rugby down by the skate park. Why do they need a football field there? They don't have a football team. They've got a rugby team, unless they're going to start a soccer or a football team. I don't know why they need a football team there and tear down those houses for that. And the city's paying for the field down there where they play rugby. Sorry. What the heck? I'm sorry. I need to turn that off. Sorry about that. Okay. The other thing is, if you're taking up a lot of land, University of Iowa Hospital is landlocked also, and they can't take over houses very easily. So what did they do for the children's hospital? They went up. Another option is for them to go up instead of out taking all this land. And now that's why, you know, the children's hospitals, they can watch the football game there, because they went up, I don't know how many stories that the new children's hospital is. Those are a couple of ideas I had. The other thing is, are the residents in that area, have they been notified with a certified letter what's going on? I don't think the residents know what's going on. I mean, they're probably working or whatever, and it's just going to be a surprise. Somebody shows up in the door and says, "You're leaving. We're going to take your house down." You know, there's a lot of renters in that area. The other thing is, we've spent a lot of money on TIF financing for new areas of town to increase our tax base, which I know doesn't cost me one penny, it's just taking off their taxes, but... increase our tax base, which, I know, doesn't cost me one penny, it's just taken off their But, have we spent that money in the central city? And I don't think we've spent near as much money and effort to revitalize our downtowns. Why don't we take that money, that's caused an urban sprawl, and invest in these abandoned houses and things? Give the incentive to contractors, homeowners, to fix them up. And then, we wouldn't be tearing them down for, you know, the college needs some space, I understand that, you've got to work with them, but do they need this much land? It sounds like quite a project. I haven't looked at specifics about how large it is, but... They also, also, when a nonprofit, like a college takes over it, do you get property taxes off that land? No. You get other benefits, the students are spending money here and that, but you lose the property tax, because they're a nonprofit, if I understand that right. I could be wrong, but... So, my thing is, what's the hurry? First, get some neighborhood groups to talk, and find some of these other solutions. The lady who was up here before me, got some creative solutions for solving housing issues with these people that live in the area. There's no hurry to do this now, is there? We don't have to do it this week, next week. And, work with the community involved, and find some solutions to some of these problems. If they come to you with a project, you don't have to rubber stamp it. We can say, as a council, what you want, you know, you can work with Palmer on some of the issues that, for all the space they require. So, my thing would be to slow down, and look at it more carefully, take some time, get some community groups, and so you solve the problems. Instead of rubber stamping it down the road, they can do what they want, based on the PID. And there sounds like there's some issues, especially all the people who are going to be affected by tearing the houses down. And if some of these houses are historic homes, you certainly, certainly should not be tearing them down. And, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir?
I'm the Vice Chancellor for Administration and Treasurer of Palmer College. And, first, I'd like to speak that Dr. Marchiori was not able, our chancellor was not able to be here tonight, he was actually out traveling this week. So, I wanted to address a number of different things. I applaud the individuals who have come up, and their concerns about Palmer's efforts in regards to we expand its area around college. First, want to address Mr. Grabbert's situation. I do believe, if he talks to Bruce and/or Ryan with the city staff, we'll find out that that alley, even though it runs now completely from, I think, 7th Street, or 6th Street, through 8th Street, that the PID actually has, goes down just to his property, and it would only close off if that field does become a reality there. The alley will be still available to him, access to his property, going to the south, down to the AT&amp;T building, and 6th Street, I think that is. So, I think that can be addressed, and his concerns can be addressed in that manner. The Mosaic study, we were supportive, obviously, the city and its staff, to go forward to determine the impact of the PID. I know that there are conflicting opinions about that, in regards to that, but we do support that the city staff went ahead and did that study, and are pleased with the results, that we believe that the PID with Palmer does not have a disparate impact on the community. And let me talk a little bit about, I think there's been a lot of discussion in regards to the actual 37 and a half acres are there, so... It appears that, you know, in the petition, you will clearly see that there is current zonings going on in there, that ranges from residential, I think R4, R6, to commercial, and then light industrial. That comprises all of those different zoning classifications for those 37 or plus acres, or whatever it is. Currently, Palmer owns 32 of those acres. 86% is what Palmer owns. 25 acres of that approximately are the college's buildings that it owns today for its academic programs, its parking lots, and its green space. So, right off the bat, we're only talking about maybe 13 acres, that are probably, approximately the acres that are zone residential. Now, those 13 acres, Palmer already owns at least half of that acreage, in current buildings that we currently lease to students, which there are primarily six large apartment buildings. And then, there are some vacant homes, and there are some individual homes that we continue to rent to students. So, there are approximately, I think, 10 to 12 homes that are vacant, are not being rented to anyone. They were in such not very good shape, when we purchased them many years ago, to didn't create economic advantage to reinvest in them. And we knew that we were protecting our neighborhood, and we were also looking at our expansion needs down the road. So, of the three, or four, or five acres that are left, that Palmer does not own, there are 10 residential buildings in those acres. 10 residential buildings, and I would venture to guess, of those 10 apartment buildings and/or houses, that at least half of those houses, because of the proximity of where they are located to campus, that a lot of our students live in those buildings now. So, yes, there may be individuals in the next 10 years, that the PID gets approved, and the college continues with its plan. If we're able to acquire these properties, which we do not own, and it doesn't require anyone to sell their properties, and it doesn't necessarily require Palmer to buy their properties as well. But I don't believe that there is, that the students who may be displaced, will be obviously housed in other Palmer housing, that it currently owns, and currently operates, or new housing that we may or may not build in the future, as we're doing a housing study. So, I don't believe that, you know, that the process of delaying this, I appreciate the recommendations of Mosaic to talk about this, but this was a process long in coming in regards, we had community meetings last summer, and so there has been some community input on this, in regards to moving forward. So, I appreciate that, you know, I'm here to answer any questions the council may have, but that's a little more in-depth of what the 37 and a half acres, we're talking about rezoning, really comprises of, at this point. It's not a lot of acreage, that the college is trying to acquire, and/or put in this PID in cooperation with the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, is there an alderman who would move for the second consideration?
It's moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion for any of the aldermen at this point? Alderman Ambrose, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, first off, I want to thank everybody for showing up tonight, and they should be excited to know the council's top priority is to focus on revitalizing our core neighborhoods, try to make them safer and more robust. So, in the future, we're going to have lots of discussions, a lot of opportunities for people to share some of their ideas and concepts, so that's a top priority. And the discussion's going to begin fairly quickly, and if you follow the city website, you'll be notified. As far as St. or Palmer College, they've been part of our community since 1890s, along with St. Ambrose. You know, the comment that they don't pay property tax, both of them have close to $100 million of year of economic impact to our great community. So, this project has been needed for a long time, and I think it's a great project, and I thank Palmer for stepping up to the plate and doing the PID, because it opens up a great discussion with the neighbors. And now, if there is any displacement, I'm very confident that it's going to be easily manageable, that everybody's going to be taking care of and have good homes. So, you know, I think you're fear mongering on some of these issues, you know, Palmer's hasn't been a great neighbor, because they have neglected the neighborhood. They've looked out for the neighborhood, they looked out for the Hilltop neighborhood, and, you know, the city of Davenport probably has over 100, maybe 200 chiropractors with offices in the city of Davenport that practice, that have graduated from Palmer, and they too, have a tremendous economic impact to our great city. So, reassure the city's going to be focusing on our core neighborhoods. We're a very open and transparent city, we seek out input from everybody, so stay tuned.
Thank you very much. Alderman Condon?
I'm going to maybe take the risk of thinking out loud a little bit, but I do feel like I owe you the respect to let you know that I do hear you, and I do appreciate the voice that you're bringing to this. You've given me perspective on this, in some areas where I didn't previously have it. And specifically, I apologize for not replying to a few emails, as I've tried to find my confidence and voice here on the council, starting out. But, I just wrote down a few notes. First of all, the PID process, by its nature, did include a lot of outreach, and while we come to this pivot point, there's a lot of important voices still being added to the debate, or the consideration. But, the Mosaic study itself was a proactive approach, to try to give this some due diligence. The dilemma of affordable housing is much bigger than this one PID, and I think the number one topic of conversation on the council right now, is neighborhood revitalization, and how we can make that successful, inclusive of affordable housing, but also inclusive of bringing some progress to these neighborhoods that have long been ignored. You know, something that is my number one thought, is how do you reconcile the challenges of affordable housing and gentrification, with the equal challenge of the fact that Davenport is a mid-sized Midwestern city, not unlike thousands of other Midwestern cities that are kind of grinding it out, and fighting the good fight to stay relevant ourselves, in this competitive economy, this global economy? So, you know, you don't want to forget that aspect of it, that we need to keep in consideration the overall health of the city, so that we can all thrive together. And, this last point is, not to be insensitive, if I misstate it, but a good point that has hit home to me, that a couple of people have made, is, you know, what is, what is the useful life of some of these homes? And I have not been in these homes, and I don't have a full appreciation of what condition they are, but, again, not to use an analogy, in a way that can be interpreted wrong, but I liken it to a used car, because, you know, there's new cars, and there's used cars, and there's more humble cars, and, you know, you fight to keep those on the road, because they're still serving a good purpose for somebody. But at some point, cars do get in a state of disrepair, where it may not be feasible, or economically smart, to keep them on the road. And if some of these cars, some of these houses have reached a point where, you know, no matter what progress we make in the city, and in the surrounding area, these particular houses will never be able to come back to a state where they will be, houses that are financially smart, to be able to put money into and revitalize. Maybe, maybe in some instances, it will be time to look elsewhere, and see, see how we can create housing opportunities for folks that are not specific to these areas. So, take the progress where we can, and not lose sight of the good points that you guys have brought. So, I wanted to allow you to know where I stand on this issue. I am in favor of the Palmer PID, but I hear you on the larger point.
I would just like to share, my colleague Alderman Mattson's going to speak in just a moment, but as you said, you heard them, we've heard you. So, I think it's, this is, this is something that is not taken lightly. We've discussed it in detail, as I mentioned, to talk to Bruce Berger. That's an ongoing process, as we get more and more information, how can we best, talking with Palmer, and thank you, Mr. Timire, for being here, talking with Palmer, how can we make this work the best for everybody? But you'll see, we're going to be approving that recent, in the near future, one of our top goals is urban revitalization, and focusing on neighborhoods. So, this is something we're really committed to, and it'll unfold, so please stay tuned as that gets rolled out, as we move forward. So, with that, Alderman Mattson, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for all your comments, and Alderman Ambrose and I have been here a long time, sitting up at this dais, and for many, many years, we have been asked, and been pushed, and discussed urban revitalization, neighborhood enhancement, all those concepts and words. And quite frankly, until, within the last few years, when we had some new members here, who have really taken this on, and quite frankly, for me, educated me, and helped me understand really what that means. Because I've been hearing concepts, and I've been hearing thoughts about what this is, and I haven't understood it totally. But I am, I am learning, and so, for over a decade now, people have pushed us, and to, south of Locust, we have to work in these neighborhoods, and revitalize these neighborhoods, and help our core inner-city. So, we challenge our institutions. If you remember the debate about St. Ambrose, that was, that was quite extensive. The debate with Genesis, when they were expanding, that was pretty extensive. We continue to do that, and when this first came up, I asked our staff to make sure we work with Palmer, make sure we work with the residents that are actually being inputted here, or impacted here, if they're going to be displaced, that we help them find a home. We owe them that. And I asked Palmer, the first time I spoke, to help with that also, and I'll say that again, that if it comes to that, that we help them do that. But some of these houses, and I've drove by, and I got out and walked by a couple, and there are issues with those. Having said that, there's also a couple that are pretty good, and we need to work, if those are the ones we're going to deal with, we need to work with Palmer, and make sure we find places with that. But this, this issue of urban revitalization is going from a concept and a talk, that we've had for a long time, to actually, people here are doing something about it. And I'm, quite frankly, I'm proud of that. It's taken a while to go from a concept, and pushing us to understand it, me to understand it, and now we're doing something. So, I'll say again, as I said, the first time, when we talked about this, I'll ask Palmer, I'll ask our staff, I'll ask my colleagues, that we all work with together, and come up with a plan, if there are actually people that are going to be displaced, that we find them homes. And then, we continue, certainly, a couple of my colleagues to my right, and a couple to my left, have really educated and pushed this issue, and as the mayor just said, it's went from a conversation to being our number one goal. So, please stay engaged, I'd ask you to bring more people to this conversation, because the more we can educate and help, and we're going to do something. We put a little money into the budget this time, thanks to Ms. Spiegel and her staff over there. Some of us have pushed to get more money, Ms. McGinnis, okay? So, you know, where our priorities go is where, where our money goes, where our priorities go, and so, and then where our institutions here, who we have to help, because they do provide a lot, we have to work together, because one person can say something, another person can say something, but, you know, and we can point fingers at each other, and we can say, "You need to do this, you need this," but we've got to come together and work together, because they're all staying. I think we're all staying. But if there are actually people that are getting kicked out, we need to do something about that too, so we've got to forget. So, again, I'll challenge the staff, I challenge Palmer, to work with us to do that. And when we have these conversations, that my colleagues are pushing us to do, about this center city, and this revitalization, you need to be here at this table, and you need to tell us what we need to do, so we can actually understand it. Because I'm excited that we're going from conversation to actually doing something. So, it's a long-winded thing, but we will take care of, and it's on our radar, and I thank you for keep bringing it, but you've got to keep, sometimes we have short-term memories. So, you've got to keep bringing these things to us, and John, I know you will. So, thank you for your conversation, and everybody that spoke. Palmer will challenge you to help us out with this. Thank you.
I just want to note too, you know, we've talked about our colleagues, and I want to reach out and note Alderman Rossin, who's been the champion in this issue, and she's been doing this for some time, since she came on council. And I think as we've moved forward, is, we're all getting on board what that means. I know I've learned more about it too, I've always talked about urban revitalization, but it's a matter of getting a better sense, and the fact that we've committed to it, but we realize as, as a community, be confident, it's not just throwing money at something, we're looking at, starting with a, really a solid plan, and building it as we move forward, and financing as we, as we can along the way. So, thank you, Alderman Rossin, for that leadership role that you've taken, and thank all the colleagues. A little bit of next on here, there are two more considerations. We're going to be looking for a vote on the second consideration of this ordinance. Next week, will be a committee of the whole meeting, again, and then another council meeting after that, where there'll be discussions more on this topic. So, we're keeping to hear that, and obviously, Bruce Berger and Community Development, all of our staff will be actively involved in that. With that, I guess we have, will an alderman move the second consideration of this ordinance? It's been moved and seconded. Would you call the roll, please, Jackie?
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kuhl?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And we're going to move on to another fun topic. Um, and that is a, uh, our first consideration of ordinance providing the sale and issuance of not to exceed 34 million 365,000 in general obligation corporate and refunding bonds, Siri, Series 2018A, and for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Before I turn this over to, uh, Brandon Wright and John Birmaster, uh, I just want to say, we just came back from, uh, recently from Chicago. Um, Brandon, uh, and I can, John can actually follow up and information. I was with Alderman, Alderman Tompkins and Alderman McGinnis. Um, you're a superstar in this area, Brandon. I mean that sincerely. Um, where the progress that we have made, and I know it's all of us and my colleagues having the discipline to do what we needed to do, but you've provided tremendous leadership. So I want to turn this over to you. This is a complicated process. There's a lot of voting and changing and adding. So I'm going to turn it over to Brandon and we'll walk through that now.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Brandon Wright, Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Administrator. I kind of feel like you kind of get to the end of the goal line on this one, uh, after all of the public hearings that we've had and all the meetings that we've had talking about our Series 2018 bonds. Um, I do want to kind of go over, uh, quickly before we go over the bond, uh, results, which were very favorable for us today. And John Birmaster from PFM, who is, who is our municipal advisor, uh, will provide all of that detail to us regarding that, those bond sales. Um, but there was a, a bit of, uh, good news in our bond rating, uh, for the, the city this year. And so I wanted to kind of touch on that, um, for it. Um, as you know, during the bond rating process, a group of us go down to Chicago to meet with the bond rating agencies, uh, fortunate enough to travel there with the mayor, uh, finance chair, uh, Tompkins, uh, the vice chair, uh, McGinnis for finance, um, as well as our city administrator, Corey Spiegel, Linda Folland, our assistant finance director and myself, John Birmaster is, is also there. Uh, he likes to tag along to make sure that we don't say anything, uh, too incorrect along the way. Um, so we meet with them, we go over, uh, basically how the city is doing with all of its finances. Uh, they do a very in-depth review, um, of, of how it is that we're doing with our reserve level, levels, liquidity, which again is about how, how much cash we have around at the end of the day. Um, and as you can see, uh, Standard and Poor's, when they came back with the scores, Standard and Poor's actually upgraded the city, raised our rating, um, previously AA minus, now to AA. Um, that's great because the higher our bond rating, the lower our interest costs. And when we have lower interest costs, it means that we're doing more projects with our money instead of, instead of just paying on the interest. Um, Moody's left our, our rating the same at AA three, however, they gave us a positive outlook. So that was a, a good, uh, sign from them that we are moving in the right direction, uh, with their rate, the way that they rate us, um, as a, as an organization. Um, why bond ratings matter? Well, first of all, and I didn't include this one on the, I didn't include this one on the slides, but in order for us to sell bonds, we have to have a bond rating. Uh, if you don't have a bond rating, you're not going to the municipal bond market. Um, it's, it's an indicator of overall financial health and management. Uh, really it's, it's the key indicator that many organizations will use to, to signify how it is that they're doing with their money. Um, higher bond ratings equal lower borrowing costs. And as I explained earlier, lower borrowing, borrowing costs means that we're doing more with our money, putting in them into projects rather than paying interest. Um, just a couple of, of quick statements, um, highlights from the S and P report, uh, that they highlighted for that. They, they said that the upgrade reflects the city's continued improvement in its financial position, notably its liquidity and elimination of receivables. Um, and then also when it comes to the, uh, S and P report, kind of a, a little bit of a detailed statement there. I'll only read the underlined part. Um, and this was specific, specifically related to our new, um, reserve policy and liquidity policy that the city council passed back in November. They said, "We view the recent incorporation of liquidity guidelines in its policy as prudent and a demonstration of a proactive management in an engaged city council." Uh, and you see that all the way throughout our, our report, how important it is that it's not just a, a, a staff-led effort, as the mayor was mentioning, it's a team effort. The city council is very engaged in financial management. That was reflected in, in the, uh, the way that that policy was crafted and passed, um, for that. Um, so as a general summary, both, uh, organism, both rating agencies are noting the, uh, strong improvement in both reserves and liquidity for the city of Davenport, um, as well as both of them highlighted our disciplined budgetary process, uh, that we have. Um, so we get a lot of credits for that as we move through. Um, overall, the ratings from these agencies continue to get stronger from year to year. Um, and the recent reserve and liquidity policy update that we did really went a long way to, um, helping them understand that the city council has, uh, the, the city council strongly supports and is committed to strong financial management, uh, in the city. So that's all that I have on, on that. Uh, just wanted to kind of give a general overview of how our ratings, uh, were perceived this year and the ratings we got back. Obviously the great news from S and P, that the upgrade, uh, to a double A rating. With that, I'll turn it over to John Birmaster to go over the actual ratings, or I'm sorry, the actual interest rates.
Uh, thank, thank you, Brandon. John Birmaster with PFM. As, as Brandon indicated, one of the reasons that you get these, uh, strong ratings is to go out into the municipal bond market and see how many, uh, proposals and how many underwriters are interested in buying your bonds. Somewhere in your, uh, packet, some, along your, at the front, there's a results of sale. You have two bond series. One is the Series A, that's the tax exempt series for your normal CIP. And we also have a Series B that is taxable. I'll start with the, the Series A at this point. And if you look at this, uh, sale results, you'll notice that the good ratings, uh, there's actually eight pages here full of underwriters who bid on today's bonds. Um, pleased to tell you, there was actually 13 different bids from underwriters all over the United States. And included in all those 13 bids, there's actually 56 different underwriters through, located throughout the United States. Um, if you kind of flip through these pages-
John, excuse me, if I may interrupt, how many bidders did we have last year?
Uh, probably 10 to 11.
And how many we got this year?
Just 13.
That's great.
Yeah, it's good. So it's, you're getting a real good indication from all over the United States. If you just flip through this, uh, you can see those underwriters are all over the, all over the United States coming in from the, a lot of New York interest, by the way. Uh, so you're getting the Wall Street attention because of these strong ratings. And if you look to the, uh, right, you see the TIC, that's true interest cost. Uh, that's what we call in our industry, similar to the APR on a car loan. Um, this, we call it true interest cost. It's basically the effective borrowing rate, uh, including the, the cost. So we, they came in at a 2.7296, and that was with Morgan Stanley out of New York. And then Citigroup came at a, a 2.73, very tight bidding. So you can tell that they're all very aggressive to be buying your bonds as well. And if you flip through this all the way to the back on page eight, you can see the, the, the high bid was a 2.83%. So difference of opinions of where that, that interest rate, uh, needs to be. Uh, because the finance department and the city is always trying to, uh, look for distant savings, this bond issue also included a refinancing of your existing, uh, Series 2010A and the Series 2010B. And I'm pleased to tell you that included in this refunding, there's actually some savings. We said, we're going to sell some bonds, we're going to pay off the old bonds on June 1st of 18. And I'm pleased to tell you that there's $361,000 of additional savings. Uh, that's going to be about $67,000 for, per year for the next three years, and then about $50,000 thereafter. So, uh, a little bit of savings when we're going right through this process anyway. So it was good to, to take advantage of that. So with that, I'll open it up to, uh, any questions that you may have. And I would just like to draw your attention, um, after the bids, we did decrease the bond size from 34 million 365 to 31 million 620, and that adjusted the true interest cost to 2.752, 2.7%. I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
I don't see any questions at this point. Um, with that, I was asked for a motion to move the consideration.
Move.
We have a second. Now I'm going to ask Brandon to provide some direction for the ordinance substitutions that we have to do for this issue.
Very good, Mayor. Yes. A- as you know, when we put this on the agenda, really it's just a, a draft document. Uh, we finalize it with the bid results that happened this morning. Um, so, uh, it would be appropriate at this point to have a motion to substitute the Series 2008 bond ordinance, uh, to award to Morgan Stanley and Company LLC of New York, New York, uh, with a true interest cost of 2.7527% and a principal amount of $31,620,000.
To substitute.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. We do, at this point, uh, any public with comments related to this? Uh, seeing none? Uh, any, all, any comments by Mayor or myself? Alderman Mattson?
Just thank you to my colleagues that did this. And, you know, I know the media, this, this isn't a big deal like PID, although this is saving us a lot of money and credit to, the mayor just said, discipline. Well, it's a discipline for us to listen to you guys to, to tell us what to do. So, you know, the headline should be, you know, Davenport's fiscal house is in order and they're doing great work to, to take care of your money. So I, we'll see that tomorrow, I'm sure. So.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no one else? We'll have a roll call, please.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And will the clerk call the roll for the second and third consideration?
Need a motion and a second.
A motion, yeah.
Move second.
Yeah, thank you very much. There's been a motion and a second. Now, Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now is there a recommendation to suspension of the rules? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Um, roll call, please.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. And this again, we ask if there's any public with comment, any Mayor Alderman's with comment.
To suspend.
Yeah, roll call, please. I think we gotta, we gotta do this roll call first.
We need to do the first consideration.
Yeah. Yeah, roll call, please.
Cool?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now is there a recommendation to suspension of the rules? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Um, roll call, please.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And now we have one other first consideration. Ordinance amending chapters 13.16 dash, or dot, uh, 107A and 13.16.107B entitled sanitary sewer rates amount from $4.16 to $4.45, to $4.76, to $5.09, to $5.45 per 100 cubic feet, cubic feet of water use as determined by water meter readings and amending per bill rates for monthly commercial bills from $15.86 to $16.98, to $18.76, to $19.44, to $20.80. And amending per bill rates for monthly residential bills from 1652 to 1715, to 1834, to 1961, to 20.97. And per bill rates for quarterly residential bills from $23.33 to $23.33, to $24.93, to $26.64, to $28.47. And quarterly commercial bills from $21.33 to $22.83, to $26.64, to $28.47. And quarterly commercial bills from $21.33 to $22.83, to $24.43, to $26.14, $26.14 to $27.97. Would, let's have somebody come up and just so everybody knows that, I'm just proud of myself that I read all those, but just maybe a quick overview of, of what that is. We've all gone through that in our sessions, but maybe just to clarify.
Brandon Wright, and Mayor, I think, what was that number again that you said?
[laughing]
Somewhere, exactly, yes. The, so as you know, as we went through our budget process for fiscal year 2019, on our sewer rates, we're looking to increase those by 7%, and that's what those numbers represent, is a 7% increase from year to year. As was, kind of, I think, addressed last week as well, remembering that the $2 sewer backup reimbursement fee that's on the bills will be going down to 50 cents for the quarterly customers. So, that's why that first year looks a little bit different from the rest of them, but otherwise they grow by 7% per year. These increases really are planned so that we can make the necessary improvements to our sewer system, adjust the operational needs of that sewer system, but also begin to, begin to address the water pollution control plant projects that are coming online here in the, in the near term. And that's why we're planning ahead 7% a year for multiple years in order to get ready for that large increase.
Thank you. Will an Alderman move first consideration of this ordinance?